Good evening, everyone. It's November 25, 2025, and welcome to the Jefferson Township Trustee Meeting. We'll start by standing in place of the ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence to honor the military firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here in the Capitol. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGlocklin.
President.
Trustee Bass.
President.
Trustee Young.
President. Next is the approval of regular meeting minutes for October 15, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolutions, or, excuse me, uh, the regular meeting minutes for October 15, 2025.
I second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes.
And Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes. Okay, next is our fiscal officer report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm working on a review of the election for September, September 30th, and we call it January 8th. Um, Chief and I had a meeting with the Attorney on the subject, because there was some issues after that meeting, but issues were resolved, thank you. Any questions?
That's all we have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report and pay the bills.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes.
Okay, next is, uh, public comments. Speakers are to walk up to the podium. Please state your name and address. Speakers are only permitted to address the trustees one time with no rebuttal provided. Speakers are limited to three minutes to address the trustees. Once your three minutes concludes, speakers will be asked to cease comments and return to their seats.
Uh, oops. You have your agenda. Hi, I'm Director of 337 Mayor and Lady. And I just want to say, I spoke to most of you before the meeting. I hope you go along and do what you say you guys are gonna do and finish what you started. And most of all, I hope to see a difference. Because I've been here sixteen months and very little's been done except more mess than you guys did. Thank you. Thank you.
Next we have Russell Bass.
Russell Bass, Senator Alamo. The new trustees, congratulations on the reelection. Congratulations to the new trustee. What I'm here for, I would like to... Mike, this is not the first time, but the second time, as a City Board member...
I can't hear you. Mike, speak more, of course, you have to come in, please.
This is, this is the second time as a City Board member that, that you've created a committee to shoot down the road. Which makes no sense, because you're the trustee over the, over the road department. And you run around and you're talking about you wanna go where the money's from. Well, you see all the checks, you've signed all the checks. When's the last time you, you sat down with the department head to have a meeting? You, you don't even get engaged with the community. You don't show up to community events, you know, all these boards that, that, that you're over, at the county, you don't show up to those. Uh, you know, your track record, you know, it's like you, you just pretend trustee for all these years. You know? First of all, you, you sued, you sued your own township and lost. You know, that's unprecedented. You know, you, while you were over the road department, you admitted in a public meeting that you instructed them to take down trees, uh, the township having delivered your property so you could burn to heat your house. You thought that was okay? And, and, and the laws, the RRC laws, that people in the community have gotten cited for violations, you know, you do, all you do is admitting for your friends. You did resolutions in public meetings to keep your friends from getting cited while other people got cited, open the township up to lawsuits. You know, um, and we, we, we could go, go on and on down the list. You, you told, you created an issue, uh, with, uh, a burial, or you told somebody they didn't have to pay anything in the past, they're gonna call the township to get sued. You tell your friends they don't have to pay permanent fees while everybody else has to pay permanent fees. You know, it's like, it's like, you don't collaborate with any other elected official. Well, what have you done? I mean, all you do is admitting for your friends. After the meeting, you run to a separate person every time, you refuse to talk to anybody in the community. You don't talk to your constituents. You don't answer, you don't, you don't return phone calls. You know, you wanna sit up here and play pretend every once in a while. You wanna ask where the money's from. You know, asking, does that sound? You of all people should know the answer now, you might go ask some questions. You're, you're in a position now to answer all those questions, but you wanna play stupid. You know, you think it's okay to, uh, uh, use your position, you know, uh, for your own personal needs, help your friends out. You know, you, you don't wanna, you, you don't wanna be, uh, uh, you know, all the, all the things you ran over a lot, you just show up. I mean, look, look at you coming in there every day, you don't even have the self dignity. You throw some soapshoes on your ass before you come in here.
Next is Shani Stilesby.
Say again?
Shani Stilesby.
Hello, my name is Shani Stilesby, 519 Dollar Drive. Um, I am here, uh, more so just, um, being, um, in the community, I was born and raised here, I am also on the school board, so I will not, just get away from that. Um, so I'm here because, um, Mr. McGlocklin, I'm here actually to address you. Um, I know that, um, I received a vote no in my ballot box for issues nineteen and seventy-three. And in the state of Ohio, it is required when you do a committee like that to be registered, and it was registered to your address. And so I was just kinda interested to know, um, I can understand, you know, if you were against the school lady, but I was a little concerned about you being trustee and also with just the roads, because I didn't know that you signed your check. So I was a little confused by that. I didn't quite understand, like, what narrative you were trying to perpetuate, because if you're for our township, you're for the township. And as far as the school board goes, that is, there's not two Jeffersons. So I feel like the community as a whole, we should be together. I don't feel like what was sent out represents us as a whole. I feel like it divides and causes more separation. Um, I'm not really here to badger you or, um, talk down on you, because I don't know you personally, but just from the school board perspective, um, and also being in the community, some of these funds were needed. Thirty-four years just for our school board alone, it, it was definitely needed. For the road structures out here, I'm sure, I've heard, uh, this lady here speak, um, at a town hall meeting, their roads are not being done, the money was needed. She talked about your circle not being done and being swept, the money was needed. So I really truly believe that those are the type of things you should think about before you send out vote no's and not less.
Thank you. Next is David Hicks.
David Hicks, four nine seven seven, Magic Drive. I'm concerned about the, uh, proposed new home on Portland. Uh, I have your property, it's less than five hundred feet. Uh, and I have a name on it for the last twenty years that the sheriff would call upon her, I mean, twice a year, because she was cleaning and, you know. I couldn't sleep, I couldn't handle it. May of two thousand and twenty-four, the sheriff department knocked on my door and called the sheriff in place, I was watching, he took it all away, and he could go on that night. Um, the only reason they can call the sheriff on her because I knew her from childhood, and I respected her father, but I grew up there. Um, as I said, the proposed new home is less than five hundred feet from me, there's seven houses vacant, four of them are walkways. Uh, one house is plainly being pulled down. Um, there's supposed to be six people living in there, five residents, uh, we have a supervisor over, we're the same, nine by four, nine by eight, and nine by eleven, and a bathroom that is four by six. It's not a little bit more. If you were putting that house for, um, damn, the money, you know. One of the problems I wanted to break apart, you never see a check tower, you never see a check from me. Um, I take very good children, I don't have them around that, because it would, it would cost, and I use it for gardening in summer, and I have in my hand, which when I got the gun, it would, but you'll never get a check, if that thing was in the, you gave it back. That's all I have to say.
Next is Daniel, Daniel Dickerson.
I'm Daniel Dickerson, um, seventy-three oh five, Dave Farmerville, resident of the just township for twenty-two years. I apologize for the marks, many individuals, you know, having to carry to doctor's room meetings, and, uh, what it looks like now, and the wall down. Good evening, I'd like to address an issue I've been dealing with in the township. In May of twenty twenty-three, two and a half years ago, I installed solar panels in the barn roof for an Oscarid solar system. At the time, I was not aware of needing a permit for this use. However, I received violation notice on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five in the state, and I needed a permit to apply for a BZD meeting, five hundred dollars, but for a three hundred dollar permit would be issued by the shops, combining that together is eight hundred dollars for solar permit. Researching in the state of Ohio, I found that township fees are regulated. I quote, that they would be appropriate and reasonable in relationship to the work that is done. There were no numbers in the state of Ohio that actually stated what they should be, they simply just stated reasonable and appropriate for the work to be done. The standard for a permit fee is one point five percent maximum of the residential permits. Uh, the township is basically asking for the dollar figure for the setup that did the cost, actually, that I purchased, fifty-four thousand dollars worth of residential permits, uh, excuse me, solar panels. This is ten times bigger than the current allowed setup in our township. Our township allows one hundred and twenty percent production of a house of use. Uh, this permit, based on the, um, fee standards in the state of Ohio, um, is ten times larger than what's been allowed here in the state, uh, in this township. Uh, neighboring towns and cities that research charge between fifty, thirty, and fifty dollars for a permit. Jefferson Township charges three hundred with the main for a BZD meeting. Jefferson Township already has the parameters laid out for the soil nail size, uh, therefore, um, I don't know why BZD is needed, respect for cases that are already there, uh, the guidelines that it says. Uh, therefore, I'm going to the board of trustees...
Can I turn my page? No, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to the board of meeting meetings to adjudicate price to fifty dollars per permit and to waive a BZD meeting fee. If this is not accomplished, I, I do plan to submit, like, to the state of Ohio for the issues based on the rescheduling, I am open for questions.
And it's because it's a set time, right? Marion, Mary.
Good evening, everyone, and trustees, well, not. My name is Marion Perry. The reason most people are distressed here is the thing that's going on with everything that is happening. Okay? Everybody in this township receives a letter saying vote no for eighteen and thirty. I don't know what that means, I don't know what twenty-three means, I'm there. But you're wasting your money and your time, okay? Most of the people that are probably behind you, even they're careful enough, they know something about it. The things we want are our own space, but you don't get it. The things we need is our space, but you don't get it. Now, see, here's the other thing you don't get. If you tell the farmers, "Don't do that," that's gonna affect them too, because you gotta remember some. A certain person in charge of the United States is not helping the farmers here in America. And you, you can, you know? You don't just give what he's doing, which is wasting time, because if you're not helping me, you're not helping us. Because what I mean by that is, we are the consumers, and I'm pretty sure you buy things for me, do you not? So if you don't care about the consumers, don't care about us, then you're lying to them, lying! That's a bad thing, very bad thing. Then you don't care about the areas, different ones have limits. I grew up on the road. What's so special about that is I grew up in that house. The person who bought that house grew up there. He was also a tattoo, okay, he didn't even know that I was here, nothing. All they did for him is wipe his clothes, wipe his boots, wipe his legs, to the knees. Then when he went back, they did the same thing. Oh, and, you know, they didn't get tired, but they didn't want to do, because he had to, sometimes a thing's wrong. They call me a little sweet, but it's that one. You put all types of people, I know a few in there, you put, when you put, when you put trash on my street, that's a problem, that is a darn show problem. I got a lady next door, maybe that she gives up, I got a dear... Beep beep, toot toot, honk honk. Yeah, my dear, around the world, everything, some people are made, they don't say, maybe they want to talk trash on this stuff, but that's what you will ask, because of greed.
Thank you. That was the last one.
Okay, that concludes public comments. Moving on to resolutions for consideration. Beginning with resolution twenty-five dash one three two, Jefferson Township Board Trustees authorizes the township fire chief to hire probationary part-time firefighter EMT, Parker Hawkins.
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-two.
I second. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, trustee.
Next is resolution twenty-five dash one three three, Jefferson Township Board Trustees accepts the resignation of firefighter Mitchell Thunroth from the Jefferson Township Fire Department. I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-five dash one three three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, motion carries.
Trustee, this gentleman's leaving on good terms, but another position, another department in the county, and he will, and he will be working a lot for his first year for the council for his position, but he doesn't intend to return to his afterlife.
Next is resolution twenty-five dash one through four, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes the township fire chief to hire probationary part-time firefighter Tyler Back, who is in no relation to trustee back. I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty-five dash one three four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, motion carries. Next is resolution twenty-five dash one three five, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes the road supervisor to hire Lamar Jackson as a one-year probationary part-time road employee. I'd like to make a res- uh, resolution to accept, resolution twenty-five dash one three five. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Same.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that concludes our resolutions for tonight. We'll move on to departmental reports, beginning with the Sheriff's Department and Sergeant Warner.
Good evening, I am Sergeant Randy Warner, in every kind of sheriff's office. I'm filling in for Captain Steele, who's on vacation. Month for, uh, September, our criminal statistics, overall crime was decreased by six percent, uh, which is down twenty-seven compared to September of twenty twenty-five. Community concerns that were brought up, uh, community concern in reference to construction barrels and vehicles being too close to the roadway, the shelter construction site on State Route Four. Captain Steele contacted the owner and advised they would take care of it. As far as case reports for Jefferson Township, eighty-five reports were generated in Jefferson Township. Point four of those reports needed additional follow-up, which was done by Detective Phelps. Uh, a few of the narratives we have listed here on September third, two thousand and twenty-five, Sunday, at approximately zero five hours, deputies were patrolling the area of Fraser Street and observed three individuals riding their bicycles in the middle of the dark roadway without any lights. Two of the subjects were found to be in possession of methamphetamines, heroin pills, marijuana, and a BB gun. Both were taken to jail, and the other was released at the scene. On September eighth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five, Monday, at approximately zero eight fifty hours, deputies were dispatched to the sixty-three hundred block of West Third Street in reference to a stabbing. On arrival, a male told deputies he was just stabbed in his right arm. Upon being interviewed by detectives at the hospital, he claimed he fell on a piece of metal that was on the ground. Detectives are working the case to obtain additional information. On September twelfth, in approximately twelve sixteen hours, deputies were dispatched to the forty-seven hundred block of Weaver Road, reference to a missing critical elderly eighty-two year old female. We had a very large and vast response from first responders, who all volunteered to check the area. Unfortunately, when the female was found, she was unable to be brought home safely. I want to extend a special thank you to Jefferson Township Fire Department, Farmersville Fire Department, High in the Sky Drone Recovery, Equosearch, Ohio Lancer, and Starship's Search and Recovery, or Search and Rescue, Box Twenty-One, and numerous area police departments. It shows how the community can come together and show concern in an attempt to help other citizens when needed. On September seventeenth, at approximately thirteen twenty-three hours, we were notified that a suspect shot at a stop sign approximately two weeks ago at Landis Down and Vinyl. Detective Phelps is actively working the case and has presented charges to the prosecutor's office, reference to felony discharging firearm over the roadway. Forensic services, uh, for the month of September, uh, handled two hundred and twenty-six calls for evidence. One hundred and forty-two were in Harrison Township, thirty-one in Jefferson, and nineteen handled in Washington. Thirty-four were other jurisdictions. Fifty-six broken down by the watch, fifty-six first watch, fifty-eight second, and a hundred and twelve by third watch. Traffic services in Jefferson Township during the month of September, deputies from Jefferson Township investigated nine traffic crashes. One of the crashes involved, uh, an impaired driver, was a felony FBI case and will be presented to the grand jury. There were a hundred and forty-two traffic stops during the month, uh, forty-two citations were issued, and thirteen K-nine deployments. Environmental crimes, Deputy Hamlin works with the Montgomery County Solid Waste District Contract, uh, worked in Jefferson Township for a total of one hundred and twenty-eight hours, and collected a total of three hundred and sixty-two bags to be collected. He collected a total of three hundred and sixty-two bags to be collected. Captain Steele is having an impact meeting at District Seven headquarters, five-five-five, Apparary Road, on December fourth at seventeen hundred hours. All are encouraged to attend, to learn about the sheriff's office that provides District Seven, Jefferson Township, and to speak about current events and any concerns from the community. And finally, a review of the monthly stats. Altogether, there were eighty-five reports, three hundred and fifteen incident assists, five hundred and ninety-seven incidents, five misdemeanor arrests, one hundred and forty-two traffic stops, fourteen warrant arrests, and twelve felony arrests. And that is a report completed by Captain Steele for the month of September. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next report up is public safety, presented by Dr. Bailey.
Thank you. Uh, twenty vehicles, we had zero vehicles towed this month. Uh, we had thirteen that had been tagged, and the owners either moved them off of the street or they were put car tags on them, or made sure that the tires were inflated on the vehicles so that they're not just parked out there, um, on, on the street. Right now, we've got, as of today, five that have been tagged. And I'm just waiting, I usually give them about fourteen days, uh, to correct whatever the violation is. So we're doing pretty good with that. I've got a lot of, um, feedback from a lot of the community who, um, have been really positive feedback as far as getting these vehicles off of the street. So I was really glad about that. Uh, community events, we had a harvest festival October the thirtieth, collaborating with, uh, St. Peter's House Restoration on Kemble Lane. We had that from six to nine. We served over seventy-five families and more than a hundred and fifty people, uh, that evening. Um, it was great. We had, uh, the fire chief came out, uh, the, the sheriff's department deputy back there. He, he stayed the whole time, uh, making sure that we were secure. He was going back and forth from the road department, uh, location, all to the church location. Uh, we had our administrator, who was decked out as, um, wicked, yeah, the wicked witch. Um, we had a lot of, uh, participation. Uh, we worked tirelessly to make this a success. Kenny did a really good job, along with, um, Trey, who represented the church. They did, they did a lot, uh, that night. And we had a really good success. The kids really enjoyed ourselves. Thank God that we had good weather on that day. It had been raining all day until around five-thirty. And, uh, the weather cleared up, and we just had a really, really good time. Uh, on that, uh, safety in the community, hopefully in January again. I had this on my last one, we'll have a meet and greet, uh, and a, uh, safety chat with the deputies, uh, in, also the fire department. Uh, hopefully, if we can get that going in January. Uh, still waiting on the prosecutor's office to respond to moving, moving the campers and the mobile homes off of the private property, um, or, or that is stored improperly or, or has been a nuisance. Uh, as far as the flock cameras, uh, we did get the supplemental agreement signed. We are just waiting on them to give me and Captain Steele a call as to when they're going to install. Um, and then for me, the first meeting for our community safety committee will be held November twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-five, from five to six. Thank you. And that completes my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Uh, up next is fire, um, presented by Chief Wilcox.
Thank you, appreciate everyone coming out. This is for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the IT vendor installed the Wi-Fi bridge, uh, this station, this building, and also Station Fifty-nine. We're waiting on the battery backup to be installed, and I'll be complete. I have four new applicants coming in for interviews this week and next week. Matter of fact, I interviewed two today, and a past, uh, former employee that left on good terms is returning to us. For October, we had a hundred and twelve runs, eighty-four were EMS, seven fire, and twenty-one other types of service. We had two investigations from the state fire marshal, one was a house fire, the other was an RV fire. Doctor just explained here about the problems of the campers and RVs. We have had four suspicious RV fires this year. Where they were technically abandoned or being used for storage, no electricity, no propane, and they just miraculously caught on fire. Very suspicious. Uh, smoke detector installations, two from the fire department, two from, uh, detectors purchased by the homeowners. Remember, if you need a detector, call our, uh, non-emergency line, your Jefferson Township president, and you can put two compliments over the cross and we'll be approved on, on that particular day. Under vehicles, Medic sixty-one sustained damage back at the Montgomery County Fair. It was covered by insurance. The parts finally arrived, and it's been delivered to Springfield for bodywork. They estimate less than two weeks. Uh, we have completed our annual ladder testing and hose testing that's required. Uh, those all came back successful, and the fire engines are going in now for their annual pump test. Should be completed by the end of November. Burn ban still in effect, October, November, six AM to six PM. Again, clean burning material, nothing man-made, only God or nature made. Call nine-one-one to report and he'll be able to, if you see something. No trash burning at any time. Uh, and, uh, we participated in the Girl Scout Touch a Truck at Mount Carmel a couple Saturdays ago, where the girls came to see the ambulances of the chief's car in the air. And last, I cannot emphasize enough, wear your seatbelts. We just had a fatal car crash two days ago. Not sure of the final outcome of the sheriff's investigation, but seatbelts make a difference. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's lucky. Next is zoning, that's presented by Ms. Caitlin.
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to report that I get a stop order on, um, that one fifty-one and two eleven, Apparary Road. They've done a lot of work over there, tearing houses down, no permits for anything. So they have been stopped. They're not allowed to do anything. Um, working with land banks on two demolitions. Um, I, I was just notified that they are looking at one ten chain in three thirty-two hours. So those of you that next to coming, coming down. Um, residential permits, I've issued twenty-one since the last meeting. Two commercial permits, so a total of twenty-three. Um, fourth quarter, I've issued twenty-three permits, and for the year, a hundred and ninety-nine. I've done twenty-five either initial follow-up or final inspections. And right now, I'm working on, uh, ten violations. Also still working on the driveway and solar panels. And we had four BCA hearings, uh, October sixteenth. One was for compost facility, that was denied. One was a group home for five men, that was approved. A lot split that was approved. Solar panels, that was approved. And on November twentieth, we have three new BCA cases. One is for a juvenile group home. One is for a larger, um, business sign, and one is for solar panels. Do you guys have any questions for me? No, no? Okay, thank you.
Up next is economic development, presented by Mr. Burgess.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? Great, thank you so much. I didn't keep you too long at all. Uh, business licensing and business business. We have conducted some business inspections to ensure that businesses are operating and compliant with the township's regulations as well. Um, license applications, right now we have five processing. We've issued two, and renewals have been three issued as well as of this month. Um, programs and projects. Uh, property maintenance board, the property maintenance board held a case October eighth and found a resolution that was beneficial for both the plaintiff as well as Jefferson Township's regulations. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled to take place on Thursday, November thirteenth. The next one is twenty twenty-six Neighborhood Leadership Institute. We're having this program each and every year, so it'll be continued. So the class will begin on March second, twenty twenty-six, at five PM prompt. Um, and this just allows the, uh, leadership program is basically designed to empower residents to take an active role of shaping the future of the community. Neighborhood leaders serve as liaison between residents and townships, um, township officials, helping to share information, identify local needs, and organize community security issues. So if you had a complaint, or if you had some suggestion on how the township is currently moving or where it should move, this is the class for you. So it's a signup sheet right outside. Sign up. There you go. Um, next, uh, Trex Recycling, our bag collection recycling. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. I expect you continue bringing, bringing your plastic bags. We're, uh, we are progressive. We're definitely progressive.
Do we have a number yet?
Uh, yeah, we're at, we're at seven twenty-eight, uh, a federal. So we push, we, we there. We there. Thankfully, we have three more months, so we're definitely there. Um, and one more thing, Twinkle Town Showdown, okay? Just a Twinkle Town Showdown. I hope you're excited, just like I'm excited. So what this is, is a home decorating contest, starting December first until the twenty-fifth. All right? The first to the twenty-fifth, the first to Christmas, all right? So homes will be judged in three different categories. Best traditional, most creative, and people's choice, all right? All those will be cast on, uh, the township's website. Also, the winner will receive the Jefferson Township Holiday Trophy. No pressure. Okay? So if you'd like to sign up, signup sheet is right next to the NLI, uh, signup sheets as well. So after you read the Neighborhood Leadership Institute signup sheet, look over to your left, and you'll see this. Twinkle Town Showdown. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, sorry about that, trustee.
You're fine.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, moving on to, uh, trustee reports. We'll start with trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you. So, um, I received a phone call from a gentleman at the Ohio State Department in regards to our spray licenses and spray, uh, events. And, um, came over that morning, wanted a township for the spray license, and I inspected the buildings, and, um, just township passed the flying colors.
Next is trustee Beck.
Go ahead, thank you. Uh, so I attended the Halloween on the Block. Uh, our public safety officer kind of stole a little bit of the thunder, but... Um, but, yeah, there was a great turnout. Uh, costume, uh, contest, candy, the sheriff department came, and it, the kids took multiple pictures. You can go to Facebook and see it. Um, it was a really great turnout, and, uh, it looks like the community is always looking forward to it now. So that's a good thing. Um, shout out again to our administrator, she showed up, I almost didn't know who she was. With this green face. So, uh, uh, but, uh, I need to make sure I shout out that. Uh, that was, uh, the Neighborhood Association, the township, and, um, also we were like making sure we were sending people back and forth to St. Peters. I met with the administrator for a one-on-one, um, the code enforcement and zoning as well, um, actually, um, and I made the appropriate referrals to our road department staff. Uh, set up an appointment with M R P C about updating our strategic planning, uh, goals, uh, going forward, uh, return calls. Um, and I did, I just wanted to note, um, that I was very discouraged to receive this.
Yep, me too.
And, and I was more discouraged because we just trustee said, you know, and we spent multiple time talking about putting this on the ballot. And it was agreed that we would put this on the ballot, only to be deceived into getting these flyers and seeing these, uh, signs out telling people to vote for him. And it's even more disheartening when, um, trustee McLaughlin is over the road department, and his concerns are always, or most of the time, about what the road department is not doing. And he's been over the road department for over four years. So any concerns, uh, that he has should be directed at himself. Um, and as far as not knowing where our tax dollars, they're more efficient, and not knowing about it, we all find checks them. I would really hope that you're not signing checks and don't know where the money's coming from or going to. Because as trustees, we are responsible and being, and being held accountable with the citizens of our township's tax dollars. So it is imperative, and that's not just you, that's any trustee, that we know where the money is coming from and going to. And, and, and I just wanted to make sure that I made note of that, because I was very discouraged to see that. And I understood if you were against it, but we wasted a lot of vital time, uh, putting, talking about putting this on the ballot, so, um, I'm just, I'm not gonna give up. I'm gonna keep fighting for my community. And, um, I look forward to another time when we come out to try to pass a treaty to look out for the community we all love and, and care about so much. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Up next is myself. Um, I'd just like to say, here at Jefferson, we have a population of about six thousand. We operate on a, a budget roughly of about three million. And this turnout, I think we had, as far as voters, we had maybe a little less than fifteen million. Um, those are real interesting turnout numbers. Uh, nevertheless, uh, the, the community has spoken. Um, then I looked at the majority of the levees across the board. About eighty-five, ninety percent of them had failed. Maybe that's an overall reflection of where our country is right now in terms of layoffs and things like that. But as a trustee and as a steward, um, we, we work hard, um, to do what's good and do what's fair for the township. We operate in total transparency. So whatever you want to know, there's nothing to hide. And, um, just as well as we work hard for the citizens, the residents of the township, we work just as hard to defeat internal forces that try to stop us from making Jefferson a better place. In saying that, I'll close it out, and I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, me and adjourn at seven forty-seven.